Gerald Plating and zoning Commission, it's 6:02 PM. We have all members counted for, Jason Catelyn, Seth and myself, and Mr. Bryson. Mr. Bryson, would you like to leave us an invitation?
Don't want to stand up, please? Most gracious having Father be kind to you in the saving and ask for your guidance in the decision-making that we all have to make tonight. We want to make sure that what the decision we make is for the love of our town, our city and our neighbors. Watch over us, Lord, lead God direct us in all things, Christ name we pray, amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and not a doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brings us down to two public comments. Plating and zoning commission will conduct a public comment period to allow members of the public to address the commission regarding any matter pertaining to or affecting the city of Gerald. Each speaker shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes to make their remarks. Unused time or any portion of an individual's allocated time may not be conceded, transferred or shared with another speaker. The overall public comment period is consistent with and subject to a total time limit set by the City of Gerald City Council. Plating and zoning commissioners will not engage in discussion or respond to matters raised during public comments unless they are specifically listed on the agenda. Now the sign up sheet. First of all, one is Roberto Bravo.
Taddy.
Even.
I go by the name of Roberto Bravo, I've been a resident here pretty much all my life, just me going up to the high school, playing sports and whatnot. My concern is the idea to propose, to make Hughes Smith Lane into a den, which is right where my house is. That would be extremely unsafe in the case of a natural disaster. We just can only hope that it doesn't come from the direction that you guys are planning to have our only way out. I haven't lived here for 20 years, or over 20 years. It's ludicrous to me for anybody to think just to take a road out for whatever business decision, it's obviously just put money in your pocket, I understand it, but you gotta make a limit. But, to when do we cut that off? Because cutting off the safety of others isn't gonna benefit any of those people that I'm putting in jeopardy. I am included in that. And I have a daughter, I also have brothers, there are also many, many neighbors that I've had 20-plus years. We're also here with that same concern. And in order for you guys to even do anything with that land, you have to build it up. We've already, I'm dealing with flooding now just from a portion behind my house that is already retaining water at my front doorstep, now. And I can only imagine what y'all, if that was to pan through and then we go level up that whole road and take out, our only way to get, our closest way to get to 35. I can only imagine what water that's gonna bring, put in more material where it wasn't before, all that water's gotta go somewhere. That's right at the bottom of the hill where y'all plan on cutting that off. So, the proposal to do any of that is just ludicrous to me, that anybody would even think that that was okay, to even try. And on top of that, not even getting a letter to be informed that that was gonna happen. I had to find out from my neighbors, again, that I've had for so long, that are, having to be told, hey, we plan on cutting all this up so we can, you know, make some more money. Again, when do we cut that off and start worrying about the people living here? Because again, not being told and having been told by, again, the neighbors, that y'all guys were planning on doing all this, I would raise hell had a dozer or any sort of equipment come in there and we get told nothing, they shut off that side of the road, that's ludicrous. That only benefits those people trying to put money in their pockets, it does nothing happen to you guys. So that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Lori Crane.
Hello. First of all, I say thank you, Mr. Bryson, for that prayer. And that prayer, you said you, you know, wanted to bless the citizens of Gerald, and I'm one of those. I am requesting you guys to deny the proposal for 3.1. I am a neighboring neighbor of that property. And that property is wanting to be rezoned to business or commercial property. In order to do that, you would have to rate, elevate that property to put business on there. If you do that, there is a Willis Creek that runs right through there. I live on the other side of Willis Creek, so you would be flooding out my land and my home where I live. We do have cattle on the property, so that would also affect the cattle that we have, the merchant units, I mean, all of our things. The roads out there are not equipped for any type of commercial. The roads have not been properly fixed, the potholes have been filled in, but once the rain comes in, the potholes are bad. With the traffic that continues to go on through there, it's still unsafe, no one really neighbors that area, there's a lot of speeding that happens. We do put a commercial area over there, all of those traffic areas and the risk factor of crashes happening is just going to increase. Thank you for your time.
Good very much.
Thank you.
I did forget one item, just to make sure everyone silences their phone during the proceedings. Next up Travis Crane.
Yes, I'm here today to speak against the 3.1 as well. Rezoning it to commercial is gonna create a lot of issues for us. We are mainly concerned, I think, about the water issues. Willis Creek, it's the start of a big watershed there. So whatever happens from there down will affect all the way to Ranger Lake. My driveway actually is, runs over through Willis Creek, so the more concrete that they put in there for commercial real estate is gonna increase the potential for more water damage. The auto zone that recently got put in, I noticed there's no retention ponds, so we're already catching more water just coming from that area. With more commercial properties, depending on what it may be, it's gonna create more trash for the livestock to consume, for us to have to pick up because nobody takes that stuff up. It could potentially create more damage to our property with the higher amount of traffic. There's, seems like a lot of better places in Gerald to have commercial real estate. Right off the frontage road would probably be a, you know, a better place for commercial, but again, I think that's probably my main concerns is flood damage and putting my house at risk, being close to the flood plain as well. So, that's pretty much what I got on this, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next Stephen Crane.
Evening councilors. My name is Stephen Crane, resident Gerald Texas, my entire life. Grandson to Felix Beach Whitner. Grandpa Pete Lordard, always alive, is farmer, rancher, custom made tailor. He also served this community as school board member, Gerald I S D. Officer of the local farm bureau. Most importantly, he was a member of the Gerald volunteer department. Forty-three years, was fired chief for thirty-four most years. He farmed this track that we're out here speaking against. So I'm here to urge you to deny this proposal, rezoning of this agricultural land to commercial. As a community member committed to preserving our environment and quality of life, I believe this rezoning poses serious risks that outweighs its benefits. I'm primarily concerned with threat to Willis Creek, which flows directly downstream from the proposal site. Commercial development would only increase the impervious surface, thinking parking lots, root tops, leading to a great water runoff. This height is the risk of flooding on my property, those in my family, my neighbors. We've seen heavy rains already overwhelm this area before, and paving over agricultural land will only worsen this. This danger that's putting homes and our livelihood at stake, protecting our waterways and preventing flood risk must come first. Beyond the flood, this rezoning would harm our community's quality of life. Commercial activity brings life pollution, noise pollution, disrupting peaceful nights my family, my neighbors cherish. Also, the general, also the degrades Willis Creek, our surrounding ecosystem. These changes, these changes don't just, don't just affect me, they affect every resident who values our area, our natural beauty and tranquility. I understand that you guys have a job to do, but we have to all look out for us. We've been here for our entire lives, so appreciate you all taking that into consideration, thanks.
Next up Alex, what was your last name?
Berman.
Berman, thank you.
My name is Alex Berman, I'm Beach Whitner's son-in-law, and we lived there for thirty years, and I put right up to that bar. It's been our cattle, mine, my brother's, and everybody bothers me that it came down to this. The signs were put up yesterday, three o'clock maybe, 2:30. I drove up home for lunch, they weren't there, also when they pop up, good thing is that we all got on chat and everybody started realizing what was going on. You know, I think that our city needs to be a little better with informing people. You know, we were the only ones that got a letter. You guys need to do a better job here, I think, in informing all these people. You know, we're here and I'm, you know, we've had people go through the fence, you know, we're still trying to find out who we gotta go after to get our, to get our money back to other folks that we needed to fix. You know, two years ago, some guy got chased to McDonald's, threw our pasture, the policeman followed him. They went over some big rocks, tore their oil pan out and left a big old oil spot out there in pasture, you know, left the fence down. You know, we, we don't even know where to go, can the police station see, get some information on these people? Nothing. This man rode his truck into a pond that's retaining water. You know, the policeman didn't, couldn't do nothing because it was dark. They came back the next day to get the truck out and told us that we could find a body there. There was nothing there. That guy jumped out and come find out he wore a blue warrant coming from Sladeau. You know, I mean, the roads aren't there for none of this, the roads need to be better, you know? Four years ago, I stopped, they were working on 375. And I stopped and talked to them and asked them when they were gonna do FB Whitner, he said that we were next on the list. Five months later, they showed up with a shovel filling up puddles. You know, we're not there for nothing out there in that pasture. Roads barely give one vehicle through there. You know, I can't imagine a semi going through there to drop off supplies. Let's get the roads fixed, let's start doing, you know, some infrastructure there, let's start where we need to, and then let's bring the people, let's bring the businesses. That's the way these things work, most of the places, I guess. You build this big building, then what, then the roads? You know, you ought to try to drive out of that place at eight o'clock in the morning and see how you can get up to 3:30. Right there at that intersection, you will have help trying to get out there, you know? I mean, you guys need to see it, you guys need to experience it. That's all I can say.
Berman Jones. Next up, we have Louis Taddy.
I've been here in Gerald before y'all even knew Gerald was in Gerald. Yeah, I didn't get very, I didn't get any notice either.
Yours came back in the mail the day that we talked.
That's first, and I found out about it yesterday morning that this was gonna happen. And like Alex said, the sign was coming up. But, yeah, I'm like against annexing this in the city. For one thing, it's as far out there, you're gonna have to provide sewer, which just about a year or two ago, you told me that there wasn't gonna be a sewer on that side of the highway. And from what I gather, I don't think you have capacity anymore in any of your treatment. And I think, because I could talk to one of your people that had come to you and asked to develop some land, and y'all put him off for about three years already, I think, saying that there wasn't gonna be any sewer. And he has to wait to build more sewer. And also, the traffic too is one thing over there, it's bad, and that'll just add to it. And I don't know, nobody said what retail or whatever's coming in there, so we don't know. And I mean, if it's a Walmart, that place isn't big enough for that. And that's why I know y'all wanna annex the road, the only reason you annex the road is so you can close it. And I don't, and then, what do you do with the road? You're gonna give it to Walmart, which we pay tax on that road, so how come you're giving it away? I mean, you know, it's half acre land, land's pretty valuable out there, and so that's the developers, they'll pay. And there should be something in the city that you don't just give land away, close the road and give it away. I've had, I've been up here before with y'all, where y'all closed the road and I didn't know it was gonna be closed, till I came there one day and it was fenced across. That's the first time I found out about it. So, yeah, there needs to be a little more transparency in some of this stuff that goes on. And then, the impact on the neighbors is gonna just, it's gonna be bad. And another thing, the people that are asking to annex this were, what was it here, not more than a year ago, they were just totally against annexing anything over on that side of the highway. They were just vehement, like, we're not gonna annex that piece of property over there. And now that they have some property, they want to annex it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up Justin Phillips.
Thank you. I'm against 3.1. I think the transparency is lacking between the PNZ and the board for all the citizens of this community that have put their life, their heart and soul into this community. And the majority of them were never notified about this. The sign went up yesterday. I think y'all should really find it in your heart to reschedule this meeting and make sure every resident, most cities in our area, within a half mile radius of a proposed change, will send out a letter to every resident in that area. It seems like that was lacking, a lot of people did not get that, and the sign didn't go up till yesterday. And it fits the MO of the developer that is doing this. We've gone through this before, as Mr. Donovan was talking about, about getting properties annexed. And in doing that, if it fits their MO, absolutely they'll do it. But if it, but if it doesn't fit their MO, oh, absolutely not. Annexing Hughes Smith Lane, are they, the big question I have, are they paying for this land? Or is it just gratis? Is it free? You know, who is getting that? The taxpayers have paid over that for decades. Somebody paid, the county paid for that land back in whatever year it was, I don't have that timeframe on me. But somebody paid for that land at some point, and now it's just, hey, you can have it if you'll come in here. So, really, I feel, I think for the, for the best interest of the citizens of this town, is that this PNZ meeting is rescheduled and heard on another day. And that all citizens are notified and well informed of the meeting that is going on here now. Because I think you're gonna see a lot more people show up if they would've known what is going on. Again, the water issues, I'm sure half the people around here don't realize the water issues that are gonna be coming. What, it's just ludicrous to me that, again, it just fits the MO of the developer that's doing this. Hey, they're just gonna give us this land. I think there needs to be some sort, hey, if they wanna pay for it, give it back to the, to the citizens of this town. Help these people out, they're gonna have water issues that are coming to their property. And to make sure that, you know, their roads aren't getting flooded, their cattle aren't displaced. So, again, I just really feel that the best interest at this point would be to reschedule this, make sure all citizens are notified, the signs go up in a timely manner, and hear this on another day. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That was our last public speaker. That will conclude our public comments for this evening. Moving on to agenda, item 3.1. Conduct a public hearing to discuss and take possible action regarding the limits to change zoning designation from agriculture to highway commercial, C3. Upon approval of both annexation and right-of-way abandonment on property described as being a 2548 acre tract of land situated in the Isaac bunker survey. Abstract number 54, in the City of Gerald, Williamson County Road number 313 and Cemetery Road. To vary with public right-of-way dedicated by use and occupation. And to change zoning designation from agriculture to highway commercial, C3. Upon approval of annexation on property described as being attractive land in the Isaac bunker survey. Abstract number 54, Williamson County, Texas, and being all of a call 14.238 acres described as tract 1. And special warranty gift deed to Jacqueline Allison, reported in document number 2008086839. Official public record, Williamson County, Texas.
Commissioner, I have to request before you to rezonate a section of, or parcel of land approximately 14.23 acres of the Bayou Shortner and Hughes Smith Lane. The rezoning would be contingent upon successful annexation into the city limits. City infrastructure in this area will be wastewater in streets, the water services will be provided by Gerald for no water supply preparation. And then to just address some of the concerns that the residents did say. Notices were sent out to everybody within a 200-foot boundary, some of those were returned from the local service. I do have them scanned, just as proof that they were sent out without return. Some of them were sent to proprietors that were not living on those properties, so we have to have a different name when it was mailed to the residents there. And then to address the abandonment of Hughes Smith Lane, it's not just given to the developer, there's a survey done on a portion of the request to be abandoned. And then an appraisal done, and then they're offered the.
Can replace.
And they're offered the opportunity to purchase that portion of their land that's adjacent to it. So, because this developer would be developing on both sides, we would survey the land, appraise it, and then tell them what the heat rate is and then purchase it until they get that price. That would be, that's a step later on, this is just a preliminary step to see if, to see if zoning will pass for the parcel. Roadway conditions, the majority of those roadways are not within city limits, they are county, or may annex adjacent to that roadway, then it does become ours. So there's a portion of FB Shortner that is the city's, the majority of FB Shortner is not, the city's, it is county. And I believe all of Hughes Smith Lane is county maintenance. For any issue with Willis Creek, the developer's engineer is here, and he can probably further explain, there would be onsite detention required. Appropriate for this size of development, it would use not detention pond, it would be to accommodate the impervious cover that they proposed for this site. And then we can discuss to run water. And then the proposed site plan. You can see here, this yellow portion is the portion of Hughes Smith Lane that they proposed to abandon, it will be rerouted up through the site to County Road 313. And this aligns with the, one of the driveways for the existing drive gas station on the other side of County Road 313. It's proposed to be signified, there will be a traffic signal to accommodate, to assist with traffic.
Who's paying, who's paying for that?
The developer's driveway portion of it?
The traffic signal?
Traffic signal.
How much of a portion?
I don't, is that part of the development agreement we have?
It would be what our proportion chair would be. And I don't know what that is.
So, we're not, we're not at that point yet, we're at rezoning.
For reasons.
There's a lot of other steps that we have to take. Yeah. So, rezoning first, and then annexation, roadway abandonment, then housing, infrastructure, final plat- okay. And they will be. Sorry, they will be repairing a portion of FB Shortner adjacent to their site to accommodate for that increased traffic flow. You can see it on this side, this would be the entire proposed site fully out for the developer. We're gonna talk about lane foot.
What about the signs?
I'm going to have to defer to the developer for that, they were responsible for putting the signs up.
What, what's the progress, is it that they have to have them up?
Between 15 to 10 days prior to meeting. Okay.
Do you have an answer for that?
I do, Commissioner, we were not aware, many cities owe signs themselves.
It's on the application, if I know, if I know correctly, so it's not that you can't know that that's not there.
Well, I'm just saying that many cities do it themselves, and we did not understand that we were required to do so, but we did it as soon as we were made aware of it.
Is it, isn't it so on the piece of paper? I'm trying to, I don't remember.
As part of the application, the last page is that they understand that they have to, they sign off.
It says that they're supposed to do it.
The requirements for this one.
Not the city, I just wanna make sure.
And I do apologize, I normally, I would wanna check, I.
I know, we have, I do too, but we had life, I usually go check every one of them, if I wouldn't have seen it there, we'd probably, it's hard to discuss this. I wanna present the. What's that?
They weren't able to present it.
Thank you. Because normally I would check too, you know, I do too, so.
They weren't yesterday, what? I took a picture when I drove by to the gas station, they were not, when I drove around.
We gotta keep this just with the developer right now, the public comments are closed. Developer wants to step up, we can discuss, President, what you're proposing here.
As Chairman of the Members of the Commission, I'm Henry Gilmour, a land use lawyer in Austin representing the applicant. It's an honor to be here, we're super excited about this project. I'm very impressed by the community turnout, I, being in Austin, I mistake, not only happened in Austin, but I'm impressed with the turnout here. As staff has reported, this rezoning request is being made for property at the southeast corner of FB Shortner and Hughes Smith Lane. These two tracks will be combined with a larger track to the north, if you could. Swift to the next. With a larger track to the north, that's already zoned, C3. As staff mentioned, the C3 zoning being requested is consistent with existing C3 zoning immediately adjacent to the north and consistent with the city's future land use map. C3 zoning is intended for establishments offering commercial goods and services located along the regional corridor. These two tracks are located within the city's I-35 regional corridor. The parcel in green that you see on the slide is the Allison track, total of 14 acres, next slide. The parcel in green is the portion of existing Hughes Smith Lane that's being requested to be vacated, it's about a half acre in size. Next slide. This is a, this is the zoning map, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see the blow up of our tracks that are green, adjacent to the existing C3 zoning and immediately adjacent to the north. And the additional C3 zoning along I-35 and on either side of I-35. Next slide. This is a copy of the proposed site plan that's been submitted to the city. Yellow's the primary retail building of approximately 170,000 square. This is a copy of the proposed site plan that's been submitted to the city. Yellow's the primary retail building of approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. The associated parking is primarily adjacent to the north of the store. There's also a proposed service station showing up the northern portion of the project from County Road thirteen. Primary entrance will be on County Road three thirteen with other driveways proposed on Beache Shortner. We are, as I mentioned, extremely excited to propose this for the city. We think it will be absolutely transformative for the city. We do have our project engineer, Kelly Moore, here to answer any questions that you may have, and we also have a representative of the big box city there here to answer any questions. We'd be glad to answer your questions at this time.
Sheriff, it's all there. What's the square footage on that?
It's a little over a hundred and seven thousand square feet.
Where's the intended use of this building? When you're speaking in a very large building here, what the service station would? Can you speak on what the intended use would be?
It'll be a big box retail consisting of groceries and, uh, commercial products.
Similar, assuming to Walmart, AGB.
Similar to Walmart.
Understood. Thank you. Looking at this map here, um, that's gonna be atrocious for people coming off of that road, trying to get to something of that extent. Yes, sorry.
The Kenbrooks, it's just, it's atrocious over there. I, I, I like what that is.
Have you done a traffic study?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what is the traffic flow of three thirteen at eight, it's about seven thirty in the morning?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Three thirty in the afternoon.
Hello?
Five o'clock in the evening.
Correct. My name is Juan Moraeta. Uh, we're the city.
Tom, what was your last name?
Juan Moraeta.
Moraeta?
Yeah. So, yes, we have done a traffic study for, um, County Road three thirteen, and we do see that it does back up in the mornings and in the evenings, like you say. So, any traffic trying to exit through, uh, County Road three twelve does have a hard time making that left into, uh, I thirty-five. That's the reason why we are proposing having a traffic turn, uh, signalized to help with that movement of traffic. We will also be adding dedicated right turns and left turns from three thirteen into Gator Road, as well as, uh, Huesmith Lane. So, uh, County Road three twelve will be widened and totally redone from three thirteen all the way to the end of the parking to handle all the new traffic and traffic flow as well. So all that payment will be redone for this development. Also was concerned about the, uh, water flow for the site. As you can see down there, we have about a acre and a half detention pond down in Southfield will fully capture all proposed, um, increase of water for the site, uh, as well as the detention pond dedicating solely for the fuel site up north. I know this is not our site in particular, but also I believe have a underground detention and they're fully retaining, uh, for their site. But regardless of the, both, uh, all infrastructure around the property will be, um, redone, uh, and match to the better standards. As people said, there are loopholes, there are all these items. Probably not those roads. And the developer is going in there and completely doing those, those.
Did you take into account the runoff of all that asphalt you put down there that's gonna run down?
Correct. Yes.
Where are you gonna, what are you gonna do for those ranchers out there, those people who run the cattle that depend on that runoff water to produce the grass and their livestock?
So we're completely releasing out the same flow that is existing now, so the, the, the water should not change from existing conditions. Will exactly match, and our detention outfall will be sized accordingly to match the, the, the requirements from the city, which I believe are the two-year, ten-year, the twenty-five-year.
Another question about the elevation. On the south side of that retention pond is, what's, what's the difference gonna be from what you're gonna need to bring in to make this elevated towards three thirteen versus
Yeah, so there, there's a grade you wanna fall from three thirteen all the way to the Southfield site. I believe we have about forty feet, and the height is to bring it down to the south to the building, uh, to not have a huge, um, build to the site. It will be too expensive. So our, our plan is to almost kind of have a balanced site where we're not cutting too much, we're not building the site. So the almost kind of near resistant conditions when it comes to where the building is, but pond is okay. The pond will be about four and a half to five feet tall. Uh, we still need to put in the stages of it. That'll be the hybrid.
That big pond? How many acres?
About acre and a half.
Acre and a half. You think that'll help with the runoff?
Yes, it will, uh, the calculations of it done, it will fully work.
For a hundred year plan?
Yes.
Interested?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm high and I am with Walmart. I'm the director of government affairs, and there's really no reason why we can't have a little city at Walmart. So just wanted to, to say that, um, we are planning and available to have community meetings, give up my unadvised self-business cards. We're here today to support the rezoning, but there's also still a lot of extra steps to get a storage approved. So I just wanted to say there's still a lot of steps, so we didn't consider today kind of the be all end all. But we have done a lot of studies that we're more than happy to discuss with county engineers, city engineers, with the community. More than happy to have a, a neighborhood meeting where we can just schedule open time and present the project, answer questions, take down concerns, come back with additional answers. So just wanted to kind of introduce myself, make sure that there's really no reason why we can't have a little city at us. We're super excited about this site. Obviously, we depend on people to shop at the store, so we wanna open the store in a way that the community is proud of. Uh, so we'll stick around today. You'll see plenty of us if this goes through, um, to continue to have. We'll have our phone numbers. Are you going to address this? We're not gonna go hide somewhere. I live in San Antonio, uh, which is why most of the, I apologize. I lived at three, and I thought like I gave myself enough time. Go on I thirty-five, it was nine in my time. Uh, Juan's also in San Antonio, and, uh, Henry's in Austin, so we're not gonna go hide anywhere. We're around. Um, and I'll stick around after you get any questions as well, but I did wanna take that opportunity to introduce myself and make it known that there's really no need to hide who we are.
We looked at alternative sites, and that takes the one?
Yes, sir, we have.
In Gerald?
Yes, sir, we have in and around Gerald, in and around a lot of the growth areas. I mean, Texas is growing tremendously. Uh, and we all know, right, there's a lot of people moving in, and it's kind of a chicken and egg where people are fleeing growth in some areas or maybe not really wanting the growth, but the growth is coming. And our type of projects is difficult to get that much land, uh, near areas where we have determined that need retail. Uh, so we have looked at a bunch of sites. We have other sites that we're also in conversations with, uh, cities and counties about potentially opening. Walmart and many retailers really, but I can, I can speak for Walmart. We had really gone, uh, since twenty seventeen with our community new super centers. Uh, and we recently opened a new store in Cypress, Texas, uh, which is just outside of Houston. I did similar for years. So the north of Houston is growing very rapidly. It's kind of a, they have a city, but where we opened it, it's actually more in the county. And now the, the, kind of the bricks and mortar are coming back, um, quite a bit. So it's, uh, you know, we've opened one. There's quite a few more in, in development. And then there's sites that we really like like this one, where we hope that we can make the case that, uh, we can do good business here and be a good member of the community.
What is the timeline for a project like this?
It really depends on if we get approval, right? So I mean, it's, it's, I think we kind of start determining that once we have the permits, cause without permits, you don't have a project. Um, so it's, it's difficult right now, right? I mean, this could be a, a pretty long process, or it might not be. Once we have the permits in hand, we can, we can move there pretty quickly. Um, you know, twelve, eighteen months, twenty-four months, depending on weather, uh, supply availability, you know, that kind of, that kind of stuff, of course, uh, to be able to, to get the construction up and running. Uh, but we really don't start the clock until we have the permits in hand.
Would this specific store be a twenty-four hour center?
No, right now we're, we don't have any twenty-four seven stores. After COVID, we decided that, uh, that mean is no longer there. So one of the things that you'll learn as we, if we continue to engage is, we call it omni-channel, but it's just a, a way of saying the way people shop is very different nowadays. And I often share my family's example just because it's, it's really pertinent. Every time I talk to my mom, she's at Walmart, usually at the pharmacy. There's a lot of ways to do that via technology, through our app and delivery, and she just doesn't like that. So she needs to come into the store, and we need to have stores that are ample in plenty of marketing and welding and that look good to come in. Uh, I'm a curbside pickup guy. Uh, I always order the same things. Uh, very rarely will I add something different. I don't need somebody coming to my doorstep. I like just hopping to my truck and going to pick up my groceries and save stuff every couple of weeks. And my wife has a neat box arriving with no rhyme or reason every day. And so what these stores, what we've noticed, there's really no need to be open right now. We're open from seven AM to eleven PM on our stores. And we do a lot of deliveries, so it's, you don't have the same traffic that you used to, because a lot of people are having their groceries delivered, or you're doing a curbside pickup, so it's, it's, the, the traffic is a little different. I hope to share with you all the example of what we did in Cypress as well at some point, so you can see what our stores look like. They're just, they're different than what you expect from a Walmart old picture, the old school Walmart picture. A store that has a lot more different technology, different capabilities for people to shop how they wanna shop. We have the ability to deliver your medications for free overnight. Uh, but there, there's just a lot of cool things that, that we'll share with you, and so know when you're not expected to be open overnight. Uh, and then we also no longer experience, I mean, there's still a peak period where people come in and get out of work, but if you're like, you know, like my wife and I, um, we don't go straight from work to the grocery store, right? Like, we get it delivered at a different time that's convenient for us, uh, or you can go do curbside pickup. So I'm not trying to, to say that there won't be growing pains, that there won't be issues, but there will be, and we will be more than that. We can discuss those. Uh, but it is, it is kind of a different model than we looked at before. Thanks so much. I'll be around, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, one last question. Um, I know if I go to Walmart, I go to one in Georgetown, and without a doubt, most of the time, they're either finding somebody that's shoplifting, police presence is there. Gerald does not have a strong police presence, but just unfortunately don't work harder with Williamson County. What, what can we do in that aspect when that's not a strong suit that we have here, um, and bringing in something similar to Walmart, I feel like is a need?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so what we find is that Walmart is, we always say Walmart is the front door of America, right? So there is, uh, memes and things that you'll find about Walmart, but really would represent your community. It's who's shopping at your store, right? Like, people are not gonna be coming in from San Antonio to shop in Gerald. And so I think that one of the things that we need to do ASAP is sit down with, if you have a chief, if not, is the sheriff, uh, and start talking about crime that is present now. That's what you'll see at our stores. It's, it's, it, it doesn't really bring in crime from different areas. Now, where that could be different is mostly retail crimes. So for example, there is some crime of theft of large retail, like, you know, thieves will come in and grab like a bunch of like power tools or something like a mask, and then they hop on thirty-five and they get out, right? And then they go to a different state. Now you're dealing with interstate issues. Uh, but like, for example, if you don't have a lot of homelessness in Gerald, that probably will not be an issue. If you have a lot of homelessness in Gerald, that'll likely be an issue that you see at home. If you don't have a lot of, you know, violence, you likely won't see much violence on our stores. If you have some, you know, so we need to be talking about that. We have, uh, what we call our asset protection team, so we have a lot of surveillance, uh, at our stores. We have interactions, uh, whenever you come in. Believe it or not, few people know this. Uh, I know that the greeter position is loved, and sometimes, you know, we laughed, uh, also at some of the greeters, but, um, a lot of what, why they're there for is also is for relationship building. So what we like to do also is build relationships with our customers. As you're coming in, hopefully you'll get to know who you're greeters all the time. They kind of start to find out who's coming in, and they can tip off and say, hey, those people aren't too good, or this is going on. If we have to, like in Austin, Austin's a huge city with huge growing problems. Uh, we have, uh, often new cops in Austin. Um, again, among the city, huge issues. They're not necessarily coming in from other areas, they're coming in from that community. So definitely willing to engage in conversations. If our customers don't feel that it's safe to come into our stores, we're not gonna be selling any product, and they really won't be conducive to do a good business. So we're all in on doing a good work.
Thank you.
Why are you wanting to be annexed?
I'm sorry, sir?
Why are you wanting to be annexed into the city?
That's a big question.
What is the benefit of you wanting to be annexed into our city?
Can you guys have a, a good answer today?
It's the
Cause I do, I do, but I don't know if you have like from a land use council.
There, there's a certain value in the benefit of being annexed and, um, and having those, uh, those regulations codified and things, and we're, we're sure of what those are versus being unannexed. So there's, there's a, there's a benefit to us, and there's certainly a benefit to the city that we be annexed.
I, I definitely agree with that portion of it. I mean, you've spoken to those type of things where things, they can kind of just do what they want if we don't annex. And I just want everybody to realize that. If they don't annex, if we don't take possession, and they can do what they want, they're in the county. They can do what they want, and sometimes they do. So we have to look to that as well. I hope you all understand that. I understand, we all understand y'all's concerns for sure. There's no doubt. But I know you've talked about this before. So do we want control of the land? Does the city want control of the land? I would think that we would want control of the land. This is, this is something that everybody's always talking about as a, a wall. This is all you ever hear in this city.
All right, this is, what is the previous area zone?
Sure, but this gets us there.
There are off, there are permanent sites that, that would be more convenient for Walmart as far as handling the traffic than that particular site.
I, I can't agree with that too.
Really, really is a concern I have. Cause there, I don't think they've done enough studies on your water flow and the runoff. I mean, look what happened to our high school gym. From one farm, the runoff that came off and flooded that gym down there. This piece of property here is a lot larger. It has more runoff, and it doesn't do contour farming necessary. You don't have terraces all over that place out there like this one did, but it still flooded that high school gym. And I, I, like I said, I think there's alternatives, so places to go to put something in that would be nice to have in Gerald, but not in that site. For me, I, I see that as a big problem area for everybody, besides the cost of the city to try to maintain that road. And the runoff is the biggest thing. I mean, they're gonna, this place gonna flood.
All of us.
Everybody's gonna flood, and we have a, we have a flood problem without, throughout the city of Gerald. We have runoff down in Old Town. We've got a lot of, 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 of runoff we need to learn, we need to control and straighten out before we annex more properties in my mind. They spent some money on fixing our, our runoff and our roads. Uh, that's just me, but, but that's, that's just me. And I don't, and another thing is, I do not like to see agricultural land taken out of production, because we're gonna have to eat someday. And it takes ten years. When you take a piece of asphalt off that good farmland, it's gonna take over ten years before that piece of land will be productive again. Ten years. That's a long time. And, and that's just, I mean, that's always been a thorn in my side, is taking good farm, farmland, productive farmland, and converting it to subdivisions. And why not build a, on rock, go out there along around the quarries where the rock's up close to the surface, and build your shopping center? Cause now you don't have to, it's, and that's the best place to build. Up on that rock. There's that. Wow. So, I mean, that's just my thought. I know we're getting upset, ignore that. So I'll shut it.
I am concerned about the road situation for sure. I don't know. What do you think about the road situation?
One for Harvester.
I know.
Downshutter Road.
Yeah.
Three twelve.
All of that over there. I think, I mean, it would just be a whole business down that road. Because what is it, what is the plan to repave that road? Are they widening it? Are they going to widen it to a three-way, you know, center lane road on that road? Is that the
They are widening it to the best that they can. There are some existing enhancements within that property for general water supply. So they asked if they could have a deviation from the, the width that is required slightly about five feet narrower, I believe, uh, for Beache Shortner. And then Huesmith Lane will be rerouted up through that site, and that will be, um, what's the lane? Two lanes road?
Yes, so Huesmith will be a two-lane road, and the, uh, Shortner will be a three-lane with the center of being there six feet wide.
Can I ask a question?
So we're talking about how many parking lots and spots?
It's around seven hundred and twenty spaces.
Seven what?
Seven hundred and twenty.
Over seven hundred.
And the fueling, the the fueling station portion of it, is is it going to be designed so it's not accessible to big trucks?
Big trucks to uh to park or to fuel?
To fuel.
No, the most trucks that
Because I know you're not normally let trucks park on your line, but I don't even be sure that if it did go, I don't want big trucks pulling in there for gas.
Yeah, no, they can. The the can be so it's not tall enough for an eighteen wheeler. Uh, the only eighteen wheeler will be in there will be to drop off fuel or fuel off, but it'll be no eighteen wheeler that can fuel up.
I mean, you're still talking about eighteen wheelers bringing the rock in regardless or
Yeah, no, no, I'm okay. I I realize that. But like what I'm trying to do.
Eighteen wheeler fuel station.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to make sure that that wouldn't happen.
And Commissioner, I I did also just wanna add that all of these, we still are more than open to discussing with Public Works or the county engineers. Like I said, we we, it's not a finished product. It's our best attempt at answering, but they're not like, we know everything, right? That's why there's a public zoning process and, you know, the pu- public approval process. So if you want us to sit down with Public Works and kind of go over some of that infrastructure as well. I'd rather have the, you know, maybe first you kind of really get a good sense of all the concerns. And then we can kind of have some some of those conversations, but we're definitely, uh, you know, not, it's not a finished product.
On that point of having when they first input, how the fact that the time requirement for the posted signs wasn't met, how does that impact our ability to take any kind of action?
The majority of the network does here.
Well, the the notices obviously were not, the the requirements for them.
Cause they're right, they know
If that if that has an impact on
I think there's more citizens that would speak in regards to this if there was more signs at all. I'm I'm curious.
I guess it's really a science, but now that the word is out more than you can, and while I understand there could be, that I understand, you know, everybody's not wanting it there. I can only imagine how many people might come in here saying, we want it there. And I I can't deny them that as much as not denying y'all being able to come in and say, you don't want it. And I understand it for sure. I get I get it. So one thing, but one thing that upsets me is that they didn't get the signage. I want the signage out there and it wasn't out there. So that
No, this was our route.
I think we're, uh, that's a good point. I mean, this isn't a sale in our town, so we can move to either we have to move to either approve or disapprove of the zone request and like other places that we doesn't work. And it will be approved or the
I think we can turn around as we have your questions.
Uh, so the developers are made able to postpone you to the next plan. The developers are made able to postpone you to the next plan as a meeting meeting and then conducting that public workshop in a few times. So we can get some better feedback.
Maybe a word or two. Well, I I but I I feel sure we can look to do without that.
As a representative, would you just, uh, would you say that you would like to postpone until the next meeting?
I think I think
Introduce more stick before you come in here with this. I don't think it's much.
They've turned in a lot of a lot of information. This is the first step.
There's a lot of information that's
I I think they copied a lot. I think that's okay. I don't think you look at our community that close.
So a lot of just representing our citizens, I I feel more comfortable that post postponing this and opening this, having better advertising signage. So we can definitely get the communities to put here.
I think that's what we will know of Gerald. We do come together. We are a tight knit community. And I know I'm speaking a lot for a lot of people right now. You will find that out about us. You'll see the amount of people that'll walk through that door and speak on what you propose. And I do want either way it to be a positive for the citizens. And I think that's what, I was not prepared to vote on this tonight, so I'm glad that we have the opportunity, but yes.
That's reasonable. It'd be a service. I'm pleased. It was a centers for all parties. What what is the next meeting evening?
Uh, September Change the date, change the date.
Fourth?
It's the last Tuesday in September.
Last Tuesday, yeah. Uh, twenty-third, I'm sorry. September twenty-third.
Where do you get the signs from?
Changing the the notice.
Yeah.
So just table.
All right. So with that, we're gonna table item three point one tonight. The developer representatives are gonna come back September twenty-fourth and we'll readdress this item on the agenda.
I appreciate you driving a little late here, providing
Well, they're great at any time that they're taking, that's no problem.
I'm okay. On two, item three point two, conduct public hearing. Conduct public hearing to discuss and take possible action regarding the ordinance to change land use designation from neighborhoods to business park on property described as one hundred and fifty point nine two zero acre tract of land located in the Nathaniel Moore survey. Act track number four ten, Winston County, Texas. Said one hundred and fifty point nine two zero acres, being all of that called one hundred and fifty point nine seven seven acre tract of land. Recorded in document number two zero zero two zero four six five two one, official official public records, Winston County, Texas.
Well, they can't shut them down.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks, ma'am. You're welcome.
Uh, this request is a change of land use designation from over bits to business located on one hundred and fifty acre tract of property from this on its track. The location of the person will be on the screen. You can see it's a screen. I look at the map right here. Gerald High School is located on this section right here between Circle Five and Lake River.
Go all the way through the
No, sir. It's this
You gotta go all the way through the
Yep, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, subject property is approximately one hundred and fifty-one acres. The applicant, there was an application considered for rezoning and annexation, uh, considered by the body on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. It was recommended for disapproval. We did have a lot of feedback about accessory zoning and the S F three zoning at that time. Uh, the developer did withdraw the application and has since pivoted from a residential style use to a business park style industrial. Uh, city infrastructure in this area would be wa- wastewater, water and streets. Uh, we have received three public responses. Uh, six notices went out, two recommending approval, one recommending disapproval. A feasibility study that was completed in June of this year. Uh, the applicant did advise that a change of use would still stay within the L U V parameters. They're granted so many L U Vs for water and wastewater. They would still stay within those parameters if they were granted a business park. So no increase on water and wastewater from what they were considering on the residential side. So they were granted, say, seven hundred L U Vs for water and wastewater. They're still staying within that L U V range if they pivot to the industrial use, business park use.
It's restricted on the business as a commercial. So the L U Vs will be based on
So they would still, they would still be within those same L U Vs that they were granted for residential use. They would not have an increase on L U Vs.
Why? They keep the same L U Vs for commercial.
Because it's an industrial type use?
Still name sign number.
No, no, a data center uses that much water. That's that's my concern. Is there a representative?
They they do have representatives here, sir. Um, so approval of this request would initiate a change to the land use plan and conference appointment that's approved in a separate form plan. And then, ready, okay. Assistant Dr. Dalton Little, he is the, he's a resident for the request.
I'm Dalton Little, uh, on the development team. Um, so we were looking at this use. We took in, um, comments from you guys and the some other neighbors around from our last time here, I believe it was in January or February. We internalized it with the development team. We're actually doing some of these other data center developments. Um, by the contrary, people like Percy said, we've got to utilize the water a lot. But it's actually kind of a fad in terms of, yes, historically they have a data center changing daily and rapidly. I mean, it's it's tech, so just like yourself, everything is changing so quickly. We've got one going in Caldwell County where we're actually using less than one hundred L U Vs for the, uh, for the water. And that's twice the amount of megawatts we're proposing for this side. This side's looking at two hundred megawatts, which will be, uh, a combination from, uh, from gas as well as, uh, grid power. We're working with Onward, Urco, uh, energy transfer on the on the gas side. So, uh, it'll be extremely efficient in that manner, but I think more so for for this purpose of this meeting. Obviously, we're in the county, so, um, for the purpose of just going forward with this, this is more of a comp plan in our opinion. And just talking through of changing the use from, you know, single family, from future comp plan to more of a proposed business office industrial. You know, obviously our intention is for the data center, but we can take this however you guys want to, whether it be specific to, uh, to the development that we have. Imagine in our, you can have a marketing game, or it can be more specific to just the comp plan in general. I'm happy to take it out of the way.
Question just on You said gas?
Yes, sir.
And you're gonna drill a hole in?
No, sir, that matter one, so that matter one pipeline that runs through here, that's a massive pipeline that goes from Waha, which is out in Odessa, all the way down to Katy. And we have a contract with, uh, water, or really it's their energy transfer. Water is more of a transport, so they don't own any of the gas into it. So we would be doing a lateral off of that gas line that would be directly onto our sides of the county.
So you would be hauling it out here, what you're gonna do?
No, it would be, it would be subterranean or under, you know, underneath, and it would be direct to our side. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be transporting it by any trucks and things like that. It would just be put it there a lot.
Through that rock or you're out there.
Exactly. Now, I didn't say it's the cheapest thing.
What what about generators?
In terms of
Outside the facilities to help?
Yeah, we would build our, so we have, we partner with a group, they're called Power Infrastructure Partners. They're based in actually Spieswood, then Yards, E P C, all throughout, uh, West Texas Midland. They're actually the, uh, the biggest provider for, um, T P L, which is
What type of generators? Are they gonna be the the natural gas generators or are they gonna be diesel?
No, they'll be natural gas.
That's
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, in terms of, you know, just going down the introduction of the comp party, you want to, so we would kind of go through this even further. Uh, we know the next lot. Um, next slide, just did that too. So current use, obviously it's a single family, multi-family, small scale, they're road retocking, new facilities, we're looking more for the employment side. Um, I think a lot of people know, and we've gotten to know over the course of the last two, three years working within the city of Gerald with understanding the needs and wants, listening. Um, there's obviously a lack, at least on the city side, of, um, of industry and bringing money into the city. And you just mentioned, uh, Caitlin earlier about not having enough, you know, police forces. We believe if you go to the next couple of slides, this is a very economic benefit to the city with extremely low impact on infrastructure. At maximum, you're gonna have maybe twenty to fifty people that are working there at at its max height. So the infrastructure will be extremely low maintenance for something like this. Security is extremely high on all these, on all these sites because it's literally billions of dollars of computers inside it there. So it's extremely safe. Um, does you have a question?
Mainly automated.
Yes, sir.
It's automated?
Yes, sir, for the most part, correct.
And another thing you put down here, permanent jobs, are, how many are you bringing with you or are you hiring here when you get here?
So for, so during construction?
Or once that building
Well, construction is anywhere from four hundred to one hundred and fifty. Permanent jobs, you're looking at about fifty people.
Are you growing them yourself?
No, sir, we're the developer. No, we're not. We don't operate them.
So the company that's putting this in, are they bringing their own people in to run the plant?
No.
So they're gonna hire within?
There's certain, there's certain aspects, the boots on the ground are higher than within, but then obviously that's why that that number is so low. Because a lot of it's still automated to where it's
Inter-transmitted.
So we have a lot of guys on the backend that are receiving these signals. I swear to God, I don't really understand the whole intermixings of
A lot of work from home.
Correct.
There'll be contractors, small amount of contractors that come out there and then the hardware needs repair, whatever the case may be.
I saw that, uh, my real. It kind of, that didn't fit Gerald.
No, I mean, that that actually was created through AI.
I'm sure it is. It doesn't fit Gerald.
I've got, I do have a question because just from the packet that I had, it doesn't, when I've looked at it other cities, some of them are using temporary industrial tents, but I guess that's the best I could call it, to house some of their things. Such as this. Is that gonna be on this piece of property or
No, it's
Cause of course in my package, it's just a pretty little building.
Yeah, I look right now, we was here, I mean, that's never, I, that's first off, I've never been to
Whatever, well, the these data centers, they do that. They they're gonna squeeze on as much computing power as they can, so the cheapest way to think of doing it. So that's the only thing that kind of worries me a little bit about it, you know, as far as
These have chillers or some type of data center?
Correct. So we, they utilize that combined cycle chillers that is utilized through the water system. Uh, as I was pointing out earlier, uh, to our data center in Caldwell County, there's a, these new technologies where it's almost, think about think about swimming pool. You're always gonna have to fill up, you fill up so and so a once, right? But you have evaporation, whereas it used to be you're doing millions of days of gallons all that long and it's just getting flushed out. Now with future technology, it's a combined cycle system. So that's just continuously turn it and turn it and turn it and it'll gradually add more to it. It's just natural evaporation happens.
Are there any type of subsidies or tax incentives to the cities given or offering for you?
We we haven't gotten to that aspect yet. That would be our next meeting with annexation and
Just
We are, we're getting to the development agreement with them right now.
Yeah, right now, we're just gonna finish the comp plan and then hopefully we'll be back here.
I think I'd be better with it being a commercial zone over there by by the pits, uh, it's probably better to be honest.
I'm personally more satisfied with this than knowing single family homes are going over there.
Yes.
Better swim around the porch.
I do agree.
The surrounding network, um, well, that's a high school, I assume, they have secure facility.
Correct, yeah. These things are all secure facilities. I mean, people, all some things are very, you know, I mean, it's kind of like a Fort Knox type deal. I mean, it's not, it's not ugly looking by any means, but you have twenty-four seven security cameras on every corner, more so when you get into the facility. On all around the building. So it would be the three sixty.
You have lighting requirements.
Yes, sir.
Just for you.
I know you. I got you.
All right, let's let's start.
And just, these are just potential economic benefits that we're looking at comparative to what we've seen and what we've done. Uh, when I have an average annual tax revenue, we're gonna miss over seven million dollars for the city of Gerald. So, um, just on a pure financial business decision and location, putting our heads together, we thought it would just potentially be something that you guys would be more amiable to, uh, than when we came back up here in January.
I do like this proposal. Just a little, little caveat, I guess we'll get to the next part of it.
Sure. Uh, just our board should be
And we'll leave Doc's guy to fly, say on intuitive visual screen, I mean, the whole
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sir.
Sure, maybe other discussion will item eight.
I think the only thing, you know, that I worry about is the the noise, the noise ordinance. I I have to look up our noise ordinance. There's nothing that speaks because of this. So it's highly
Is it this time?
No, it's, it's just whatever the city decides.
So
So
How address maybe in the
Yes, I'd like that to be addressed in a future meeting for for situations like this because if they're saying they're gonna be fifty decibels or less, I wanna be able to ensure that because they're close to the school.
Oh, sure.
So that's
I'm okay.
Um, we approach it. Those are, um, discussion. Yeah, if anyone would like to make a motion, let's Those are, um, discussion. Yeah, if, uh, anyone would like to make a motion, let's.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero nine dash zero two as read in the caption by the planning and zoning chairman based on staff's recommendations and findings.
We have a motion to recommend approval by Jason.
Say.
David here is second. Take a vote. Jason, your vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Caitlin's aye.
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
David?
I'm an aye as well. Motion passes. Recommend or approve ordinance two zero two five dash zero nine zero nine dash zero two as read in the caption by the planning and zoning chairman based on staff's recommendations and findings.
Item three point two, I mean, three point three is about. Conduct public hearing to discuss and take possible action regarding the ordinance to change zone designations from single family suburban S F two to general commercial C two on property described as a six point five acre tract. Outlet A, conduiting zero zero five four, as a bumper survey, abstract number fifty four, Winston County, Texas. Document number two zero two four, zero nine five seven three zero.
Thank you, sir. All right. So we did discuss government's class base two last meeting. Uh, we reviewed their infrastructure plans and their final plan for phase two. Uh, the applicant has requested a zoning change for a portion of balcony, balcony spots. You can see on the map before you for this location or what this parcel is. It's, um, just a portion of that face, um, face two final flat that was approved at the last meeting. They are requesting a change from residential to C two. There is, I just wanted to explain the, um, when the zoning ordinances were changed last year, some of the nomenclature did not carry over from the previous land use plan or zoning district. So they're requesting, um, C two general commercial and that's not a approved zoning district in the comprehensive plan from twenty twenty one. But I believe that it's comparable to the local commercial zoning district. So I think that they just amended kind of the, the nomenclature. But it's not, it's not specifically listed in the comprehensive plan, but this type of use is allowed in this land use for the, for the comprehensive plan as approved in twenty twenty one.
So it's not a C three?
Not a C three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, uh, like, cause I said C three, one.
They did request a C three and I, I do apologize. They sent me an email to amend that and, uh, change it to C two. I can have that, I will make sure it's in the city council.
Cause I, I, that was my only concern. Cause I, I think it, I, I think it's appropriate.
Yes.
C two.
Uh, so subject property is six point five four acres. Infrastructure plans and final plans were, uh, approved, uh, recommended for approval by planning and zoning on July twenty ninth and approved by city council on August fifth. One public response received recommending denial. That was today. So city sewer, city water in that area. Uh, and again, it'll have to do drainage on site attention to accommodate for any number of discovered.
Is this similar to the last, where L U Vs will apply for the same C two?
This actually started developing before we required a feasibility study, but this use that they're proposing would actually be a drastic decrease in the L U Vs.
Do we have a representative?
Come on down here.
What did you hear with the U N R?
Uh, either, cause you have questions in with it?
Well, I, I, I do have one is access, uh, the only access road they have is on forty seven and it's right there in the residential area.
So part of the structural plans and the plat that you read last, last time, it showed accesses on a C bus stop to them.
That this is what they shows us tonight, their commercial change.
No, so this is only rezoning. It's not their plat. It's not their site layout. Uh, but there were two accesses, two accesses, one, two. Do you want a C bus stop?
There's no fronting on Budstock then.
To allow for two.
To allow for two and, and we discussed with the fire marshal where that access would go. And then the access that's remaining to the road within the residential portion is just emergency purposes only at the request of the fire marshal. So it's not gonna be, it's gonna be gated. It's just, you know, if a fire's there, our truck can pull and get in if they need to back.
Cause it's kind of like on the hill right there, right?
Cause they, this be a right turn only out of there. I know that traffic here has increased even probably since last time, this, the last six months, uh, that hillside.
Haven't got that far to do the traffic warrants, uh, on what exactly is gonna go there, but that'll be a part of the site development permanent.
Yeah.
So what we're, what we wanted to get is the zoning in front of this body to see that we get support. And then if that is supported, I think this will be approved with a condition that, cause we need to amend the development agreement. I think we had, there were twenty-eight residential homes here. And so we have drafted a development agreement amendment to grow all the twenty-eight residential homes, do this as one, six acre commercial projects. And then, um, but we wanted to make sure we got to this point, got support. So we'll proceed with that next. And then if those are both approved, the actual development on the site would come back to the city in the form of a site development permit. And that's when the driveways would be permitted and approved and, you know, if, if they require any kind of improvements to Budstock for turn lanes or if it was a right of right out, that would all be done at site development.
Right.
Drainage, so when we designed the residential subdivision, we had an idea that this might be developed as a commercial. So actually the drainage within the subdivision was sized to accommodate this type of development. Um, and so there's, there's underground storm sewer in the residential portion that can actually set the runoff from the site and route it through the subdivision infrastructure. That's to be installed with C two. So yes, drainage was taken into account when this was conceived as a possibility years ago.
You gonna run through sewer lines, are what you said?
Storm sewer is not sand sewer.
Your space one drainage accommodates the entire site?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to clarify.
Sir?
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, are you gonna try to do some landscaping on Budstock and the road?
That's this man right here.
I believe the, the, the final use for it would, would be a, a nice addition to the area. Yes, yes.
So I'm gonna take your word for it. You believe, I believe I have to.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I believe that it, it'll add, be a nice addition to the area, yes. Anyone else?
Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty five oh nine oh nine oh three as read in the caption by the planning and zoning chairman based on staff's recommendation of approval.
Do you have a motion for an approval? Do I have a second?
A second.
Seventy seconds. Take it to a vote. Jason?
Aye.
Aye. Caitlin?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Yes. A yes for me as well. She knows. Motion passed to recommend approval of ordinance two zero two five, zero nine zero nine, zero three as read in the caption by the planning and zoning chairman based on the staff's recommendations and findings. And more license general item four point one, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding the minutes of the planning and zoning commission meeting held on July twenty ninth. When we were here, is there any, any misses that y'all thought if you, if you note for taking properly on that one? Oh, I was just asking then. You're good? Uh, motion to approve the minutes for July twenty nine, twenty twenty five.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as well.
Sally? Make the motion to approve the minutes as well, for July twenty nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jason's second. Jason, your vote?
Aye.
Caitlin? Sally?
Aye.
And David? So, mine as well. Motion to approve, planning and zoning commission meeting minutes held until July twenty ninth and twenty twenty five is approved. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty two P M. Thank you for coming.